Join them in Flag Slope, please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to their government for which it stands one nation under God, in its freedom and justice for all.
Morning, everyone. Welcome to the Bourbon County Creation Meeting. We will get started.
Sorry. I make a motion to approve the minutes from last week.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Eric Bailey.
Morning, Eric.
Good morning.
Morning.
Apologize ahead of time. You might have writer's cramp here. We have several leaves to go through. Permits. We have a new one for Patrick Wood at 1004 South 230th. Do we have to really make a motion for all of these?
I don't know.
I'll just read them all off and then just approve them.
This is the only new one. You want me to do the new end of...
But you're going by the book. Why do we even have to approve?
That's what I...
Well, actually, we've got a policy out there that we approved and he's the director. So I don't really see why we need to do that.
I'm good with that if you're doing it.
If we can't trust him to put in call orders, we've got a problem.
I think it says it in your...
In the book?
In the book that you will. So if you want... Let me look at that and then we'll go...
Well, I just think it's...
I'll make a motion to discontinue the commission approving the call for permits. Maybe once a month, he can come and give us an overview of what he's done.
Yeah, I'd say, I think, yeah, I think that's the deal. I mean, why don't we check to make sure?
Let's check and see what it says.
And make sure we don't violate what we already approved.
Right. Because it doesn't make any sense to me to do it.
I agree.
Okay.
Let's check it out.
Check it out.
I mean, it's your job.
Right.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with it. I just...
You're just following the rules.
Following the rules.
Well, you know, we're giving a lot of $5,000 to buy stuff, you know, and these culverts are less than 500 bucks.
Yeah.
Yeah. Justin?
That's good.
And we're not doing anything today necessarily maybe, but is there... Why do we have to approve and make motions on every one of these culverts? We hired Eric to do a job. Why can't we not trust him to do that job?
I think, we talked about this yesterday, some other things. It's 10 years from now. You know, the paper trail, having it, you know, like, we got some roads that we're dealing with for some closing, non-closing bridges that are, you know, we... It's for the people that are...
These are culverts.
Right.
We still have to permit.
You still didn't have to permit.
Right. I mean, as long as there's a paper trail.
Well, we're still, our policy requires them to have a permit.
Yeah.
Right.
Let's look into it and come back next week.
I'm all about the paper trail. We need it because we're not all going to be here 10 years from now.
Maybe we don't have...
I mean, you guys could still be commissioners, but...
No.
Yeah. Probably not. My part ain't like it.
Be 85? I don't think so.
Okay.
What else, Eric?
Get that. Let me get situated here. Give you an update on the composting permit for the soybeans. I... This is something else. But anyhow, on June 1st, John George with Ag Engineering sent an email to Emory Weens, and here is Emory's response. It says, "The permit page is still the holdup, out of my hands. However, I will forward your email to keep the heat on. Internal concurrence will be first in the public notice. Thanks for asking." So we're still on hold. We're getting the permit.
Would have been a year?
Yeah, over, I think.
When did we start this? It's been probably three years.
Long, long time. So... My suggestion is Mr. George, if there's any reason for anybody to go to DePica and get this straightened out, I don't know.
I... We have visited multiple times on it. It is in their hands. So for whatever reason, there's a holdup at the state level.
Everybody in DePica has a boss, though.
Gotcha. Right.
We would do the public notice in our office.
Have you heard anything back on the public notice? So it's still sitting on Emory's boss's desk or what have you. So I will, let me make a phone call today and see what I can find out. Rock Crusher, we're doing training this week. Mother Nature has finally let up and give us, is going to give us some sunshine here so we can have a week to train and come in and override the system, put fault codes in and different things like that so that way we can train on what to do when it does this and that. But what little bit we have been able to run, we were able to produce some rock, so...
Dustin shared with me, he crushed four hours of late afternoon or something. He said, "Unbelievable."
It is.
The amount of rock that comes through that machine.
Yeah. Yeah, it is. It's all you can do to keep up with the loader.
That's what we needed.
Yeah. So now we just got to get it on the ground, so...
No waiting to dump anymore, is it?
No, no, not at all. So with that said, we're finishing up cleaning the overburden at Blake, so that'll be our next blast. So that way we'll have our chips right there for our asphalting. Move forward with that.
Does the new machine make pretty clean chips?
Yeah, it's pretty clean.
I figured it would.
It's got a little bit of... It's pretty clean.
That's great.
Was going to start asphalting this week, but due to the training and what have you, we will start next week in Hyattville is where we will start and move from there. With that said, the culvert crew has been working on 215th. The area that we're scheduled to asphalt this year. There were several areas like Hackberry and what have you, and then the crossroad tubes. Doing a really good job on...
That's great.
Cleaning out the ditches and getting the tubes in and so we're moving forward with that. Again, we had storms over the weekend, trees down and low water crossings and what have you, had debris and logs and what have you in them. So we're getting that all cleaned up yesterday and today. So heads up there. Also, received a call from Iowa Post Office. There is Unity and 62nd Terrace where there's a water plant and a house. There is a lane that goes down there. We have checked with Laura. We've looked on the GIS, are the GPS maps, what have you, the online maps. That road does not show as a platted road on either map and does not, has not been bladed or what have you, and it's unable for them to get down to the mailboxes. Does anyone know of any agreement or anything?
That road, I don't ever recall us blading it, ever.
Okay.
So...
Okay. That's what I said, or that's what we went with.
Yeah.
Since it wasn't platted, it wasn't on the 86 map. It's not on the current GIS map, so I just wanted to make...
More than one landowner.
Pardon?
More than one landowner that goes down there.
Yes.
There's a house down there plus the water plant.
Yep, there's two mailboxes.
Oh, we're talking up there at Benzini.
Yes. Yep, so...
We never did blade it in the past.
Okay. That's the route we're going to go. I just wanted to make sure we were all on the same page and make sure...
The school was, when I was back in the 60s, picked them up at 60th, right there after the road goes.
Okay.
So whenever we went up that road.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't something there that I didn't know about. Also, received a call from a councilman with the city of Union Town today. From our meeting we had out there, it was their understanding that we was going to lay asphalt for them. Is that... I need some guidance, I guess.
I personally didn't take that from our meeting out there, the discussion. I thought we said we would review if we could help them or not. We probably got to get Justin because he's made some comments
Okay.
about us helping little cities. Justin, would you mind commenting on it?
Well, my take was, supposed to comment was that legally we can't do that unless it's in a local agreement.
That's correct.
Okay, so...
And we don't have one with them at this point.
We can't. I mean, the simple part of this is we cannot compete against private business because we have an advantage that...
Yeah.
I knew you were, the last time we tried that, that there was a lawsuit pending.
We got a cease and desist letter the last time we, from the aggregate organizations, you know.
There's your answer.
Okay. That's what I needed to know, and I will relay that. I know they have a council meeting tonight.
I mean, I made, I said, "I'd be more than happy to..."
Right. And I hate that for our small communities, but...
I do, too.
It's, you know, a loss of law.
We have the same problem in Mapleton on 125th. That first mile goes off of 65, 39 Highway that goes back south. It's in the city limits, and they were asking if we, why we didn't take care of that. They did in the past. We had the same argument or the same explanation, and Justin told them, he said, "Well, if you want to abandon that road, then it becomes the property of the county."
Okay.
And then we'd have to maintain it.
Okay. I will pass that along. That's all I have. Anything for me?
Did you go down and look at that crossing?
I did. I did.
Is it nasty?
And I'm going to visit with Justin on it. There's some issues that needs to be dealt with, so...
And you got an email from Mr. Eaton, right?
Eaton? Yes, I did. I got it yesterday afternoon late. I need to run up and look at it and see what...
We'll have to get a copy of it.
Yeah, yeah, no.
And one, I'm still convinced that on the south side of that crossing, right there where it's washed out.
Yes.
That you could put a tube in right there and it's teed your concrete, and then you still have the overflow.
I think it's going to be a lot, lot of money to get that.
Where's that at?
It's that low water crossing there north of me that people keep calling me about.
That's a disaster.
Well, so is the one on 85th.
Well, I'm sure, yeah. They're both decided. That river getting big up there.
So is the one up there north that we just fixed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, we've got a lot of low water crosses in that area, and we do, too.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's basically the only way those people get to their fields.
That one could be the worst one we've dealt with.
Yeah, that's...
Well, I don't know. Been there ever since I can remember.
I know it, but that doesn't make it not bad.
It wasn't bad.
And on this talking point, Laura Holdridge also has another, there's actually, it's coming to a head, you know, a 60-year problem is finally getting to the point where we're going to have to do some, make some big decisions. We have another bridge and another, actually two more trestle bridges that are becoming a problem in the county, too. One in the Northland and then the other one that Ms. Holdridge is working on now. So with this one, that'll be three, and we're probably going to have to make some big decisions on all three of them. One of the trestle bridges we probably could sell or use for another project, but the other one is just, it's just too big.
Okay.
That one on 35th?
Yellowstone and the one that we went out with Eric and looked at and...
That's Yellowstone and 35th, I believe.
Yeah, that's the one.
Yeah.
Now, are we getting close to this fall? I made a position to start updating our maps that I know Eric and Laura have been working on.
Matt and Laura and I are actually going around, and we've done one section. We're getting ready to do, we're supposed to do another section last week, and I was out of town, Laura was out of town, so...
I think some of these, you know, I call them ghosts, are popping up through that project.
Right.
You know, we have another trestle bridge that is surrounded by private landowners. It's one that Laura's working on that we have to make some decisions on, too, what we want to do with that bridge, and it's a trestle. It's the same 1920s, 1918.
It was north of 7 and 65 Highway that's been abandoned for years because a truck hit it and knocked it off. Its foundation is still set there.
There's another one in Commissioner Beth's district, too, that we're going to have to...
But it is in, it is in Clifton's district.
Yeah. So there's two in Clifton's district.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, what... Why do we have to do...
Well, because they're still open, they're still open roads. We have to make some decisions on, and so we have the liability of that bridge. We have bridge closings there, but you know, if those bridges fall into the waterway, we need to remove them, that type of thing.
But it is a closed bridge.
Yeah, but to me, why, you know, one of these roads we're talking about is there's landowners on both sides that don't want the road open. Give them the bridge, let them take the liability and get on down the road. We don't need to maintain it anymore. We're wasting time, energy, and resources.
Here's where I would like to go with the one on lens for time being. Go on each side of the bridge, put barricades up, let's say, bridge out, and go on each side and put dead ends. So that way it is marked. And we do have an issue with somebody trying to block our road off way before it should be blocked off.
Well, and there's seen signs, but have no crash passing on someone else's land.
Yeah, that part I don't...
I remember those signs, yeah.
Yeah.
I've been there a while.
Yeah, so anyhow, I went up yesterday. I actually have pictures. But it's something we will be working on here in the very near future, getting corrected, so...
Well, it's fairly interesting. In the past, we would go out there and build large dirt berms, rocks on top of it. Go back two weeks, I went and took everything, rock, everything.
Yep, gone, gone.
So...
Gone.
Gone. Anyway.
Yeah. And also that same bridge, there's a section of land right down in kind of where the S is that's owned by somebody completely different than owns on each of the others. Yeah, so I mean, they have to have access to their land, so...
Well, I know the landowner that owns on the three sides, and they've got thousands of acres.
Yeah. So anyhow, that's where we're at on that one. But I will get that barricaded up. We need to get some signage up and get some things
Agreed.
to where that's better marked.
River gets big up there.
Yes, it does.
The problem was if somebody wanted to go down there, and then I know the landowner from the three sides has no problem with people being on the road. They wanted to go launch a boat, you know, fat boat or canoe or something.
Right.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. And is that on the north, the north side? Yeah, that's where...
Northeast, I'd say.
Yeah. Okay, okay. Anything else for me?
I don't have anything.
Okay.
Oh, I do. Of course I do.
I was going to say...
Same area, you know, like, we've got this last few rains we've had, we're in a torrental rain.
Oh, yeah.
You know that because I see the rains running around just trying to patch some of the real bad spots. On Unity, which is north of me, between 95th and 105th, there's a place that basically washes a trench out across that road every time you get a couple, three inches of rain.
Okay.
So, you know, you might want to take a look at that. We said it was a ditching problem, but take a big ditch to get it back to the creek.
Okay. It's washing the river...
Mine was a culvert.
Yeah, exactly. So I'll get with the ASCS office, which I do want to put a plug...
Just on the east side of that old two-story house there.
Okay.
Well, you know, in response to what you just talked about ditching, and I know you're struggling with staff.
Absolutely.
Like the whole country is.
Absolutely.
We had a restaurant closed down early yesterday because of lack of staff here in Fort Scott.
Yep.
What can we do? What do you need? We become really, really aggressive in ditching. I mean, and I've been saying this for five years. I ask myself that. So I guess I'm asking you to give that some thought.
Okay.
What can the commission do to make that better for you to do more ditching? Because we got to start.
You and I had a plan, but it fell through.
We had a lot of...
We had a grater that was going to be dedicated to nothing but.
Yeah.
And then we blew up another one in that one south.
I think that's where a lot of it, we're going to have to go, is with the graders and try and go that route.
But I'd like to know if we could do anything more to help you get where we, you want to be and where we want to be on ditching.
Right.
Is that more people? Is that more equipment? Is that more money? What do we need to do?
Okay.
I'd ask you to bring a plan to us, if you would please. So we got to start.
And I will say that the culvert crew, when they're there, if they need to go
Yeah.
whichever direction, they have been doing a good job with that, and some of our grader operators, a few of them have opened up.
Yeah.
But we need to be aggressive and...
Well, more aggressive we can...
I should say, if you, all of them have tried to open up.
More aggressive we can be in ditching, the better roads are going to be, and eventually...
Absolutely.
Eventually.
Eventually, yes.
We'll put chasing or tail.
Right. I agree.
Well, you know...
And no reflection on your operation.
Right, right.
Because we had the same problem on either of theirs.
Absolutely.
The other part of that, though, is now we've got this pressure. We're producing a large amount of rock. We could do what Clifton said, get the dirt back out in the roads back down, gravel, suffer for a few rains, and we'll have a ditch in the road.
They just handed out pamphlets and said, "It rained. Don't call us."
You know...
Call your commissioner.
You know, when you ride down the road, the fields are up here and they're up down there.
Oh, we got a lot to do out there.
And I do want to say, with all the rains we've had, we have a lot of areas that need attention, and we're trying to get to them as fast as we can, so...
Good. Thank you.
Yep.
Ms. Ashley Shelton is on the agenda.
I have firework permits. So far, we have three of them that I need a signature on if you guys approve them, and then I think we'll have one more next week. We have one person that always turns one in late. Yep.
Thank you.
Make a motion to, let's see, Jim and you.
Yes.
Sign these. Make a motion for, to allow Chairman Harrison Ashley to sign these three permits, labeled number one, number two, and number three.
Okay.
Jakes, Jakes and...
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Sorry. My second thing is preservation of ballots and election records. Per KSA 252708, I shall destroy those after 22 months of an election. So our 2020 primary election, it's been 22 months. When those ballots are destroyed, I have to have two witnesses, one from each party. I have reached out. Carol MacArthur is the chairperson for the Democratic Party, and I reached out to Mark McCoy, who's the chairperson of the Republican Party. He recommended Andair. Those two people have to be appointed by the Board of Commissioners. So I would ask you to appoint Carol MacArthur and Andair as the two witnesses for the destruction of election materials.
I make a motion to appoint Carol MacArthur and Andair to witness the 22-month destruction of ballots.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
The third thing, they said they're already working on, but I'm going to give you pictures. We've had complaints from the people that rent the building behind us, the driver's license office. There was some work done there last year. It's been paid for. It was not completed. I had to go over to take pictures of another issue we had yesterday for K Camp, completely unrelated. But I did take pictures so you could see what they were talking about when they called and complained.
You mentioned this unfinished, but now we've already paid a contractor to finish it, or...
Mm-hmm, yep. They were paid, and they were paid a year ago, over a year ago, April of 2021.
Just on the front of the ledger.
Saying you know anything about it?
But it's more...
Building over there not being done?
I just found out about it yesterday. David hadn't said anything.
Yeah.
Wow.
I called him. He's supposed to come this minute.
Can we have a check-out process to someone to determine if it's done before we pay, I wonder? No?
I mean, usually who's ever in charge of the project. I mean, when they sign off and give some invoice, that's, we usually assume that...
I'm not in charge of that building. I look so good, I'm pretty sure.
I didn't say, or I'm just saying that's why we pay. That's because...
No, I'm not. I'm just asking if you knew anything.
We're not pointing, we're not pointing our fingers at you, Shane. Okay, thank you.
Also, the KAC conference is in October in Aleka. If anyone wants to go, if they want to register themselves, we'll let us know if you want us to register you.
Do you have a date yet?
It's the 18... I'll have to look.
I'd like your sign name.
It's like the 16th through the 19th, I think.
I just want to make sure it wasn't pheasant hunting time.
16th is a Sunday. Does it start on a Sunday? 17th through the 19th. That's Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday?
Yes.
I will go. I can get us, try to get us a room right there at the convention center, please.
Okay.
That way we can stay right there. I just want to make sure it wasn't conflicting with bird hunting, so...
It's important.
Yeah. Anyone else going to go?
I'll probably go.
Yeah, good.
Do you want a room as well?
Uh, yeah, that's one.
It was a lot of the last time.
Thank you. Sign us up. Look me in coach.
I've got it.
Okay. Is that it for you?
That's it for me.
Okay, that's all, Ms. Shelton. Bill Martin, jail operations.
Morning, Bobby, Bill.
Morning.
Just wanted to start off that within the last five years, we've had 90 employees go through the jail, or employees.
Oh, never mind. Sorry, I thought Ben was saying something.
No, can't hear you. They're not speaking English, so they can't hear you.
How's that? Here within the last five years, we've had 90 employees go through the jail as correctional officers. Here within the last week, we've had four correctional officers turn in their letters to resign. That brings us down to eight to operate that jail. So I'm here before you today, but since we're only operating on eight correctional officers, I'm here to inform the commissioners that I'm shutting the jail down. We'll be transferring the inmates out until we can figure out what we can do in regards to the employees to get the employees up. We've had Facebook posts, job announcements, by word of mouth, by everything to get people to come in. We have not had an application. So inmate safety, most important correctional officer safety, safety overall. It was a tough decision. Bobby did everything he possibly could. If you have any questions, we'll be more happy to address those questions that you have.
Well, one of my first comments was reading in the newspaper and across the country, even the local restaurant yesterday had to shut down no staffing. I mean, it's happening across America. It's not just the correctional center in Bourbon County, Fort Scott. It's all across our country because of actions the last couple of years. So I don't think, you're in situations as you need. I got looking at some numbers the other day, Public Works, and some of it was on my shift, has had a higher turnover rate, and some of it was on me and some of it on Eric. So I think we're seeing, my opinion only, a lot of people don't want to work. So I don't know what that means exactly legally for shutting the jail down. I don't know, are you laying everybody off? You laying Bobby off, or what? Do you have force reduction?
We have discussed that. We vote by that, too, yeah.
Okay.
No. So as Bill said, this has been a very difficult decision for me. I don't want to do it, but I have to. So I have 16 positions with me that are under my control for correction staff. That's not including myself, my captain, or my secretary. Next Tuesday, I'll have eight employees out of those 16. Those eight employees, if they stay, I have been told that another one may be coming. I know that there's one going to come at the end of August. I know, I know that, but I don't know what tomorrow brings or the end of the week brings. So those eight employees that I have, they are going to stay on because we are not shutting the facility down completely. We are moving all the inmates out that we can to surrounding areas. I've been in contact with several sheriffs throughout southeast Kansas, as far, clear over as far as Fredonia. And we are going to have to keep those eight people on and figure out some sort of a schedule so that when the sheriff's department makes arrest and the city of Fort Scott make arrest, KHP make arrest, they're still going to bring those individuals in. They're going to be booked into our system and then transferred to another county. So to answer that, no. We still have to have daily, some sort of a daily operation, depending on the court systems. We, we're still going to have to get the inmates to court. So that means if we have to drive to Fredonia to get them and bring them back here to do an in-person court, which that's opening up again. One of the judges has all in-person court, so we're going to have to transport them back to court. Just shutting the jail down doesn't mean that we're laying everybody off and then nothing's going to happen there. We still have to abide by the state... We still have to abide by the, the state and have these inmates go to court. We're still gonna be responsible for their medical. This morning, I had sixty-two inmates that are ours. Some counties are gonna charge us thirty-five dollars a day per inmate. Some are gonna charge us forty dollars per day per inmate, and some are gonna charge forty-five dollars per day per inmate plus medical. So to answer that, no.
What do you contribute this, like, staff not staying? What's your, what's your opinion on?
Well, um, so in the last couple of months, everybody that has resigned has filled out the employee leave. Exit interview paper. I have turned those in. I'm still holding on to the three that I have done since yesterday, that I did yesterday because those employees work on nights. And I don't just give them the paper and turn it in and ship it off. I do a Q and A. I'm transparent on that. I've told them, hey, this is what I'm doing. I'm gonna type up so that there's explanations, you know, to each one of these. If it's on my end, I need to know. If it's on this end, they need to know that too, but they need to know everything in a nutshell. All of the ones, the last four, including the three that I did yesterday, plus the last one that I did, several years ago, we opened up our job pool because it used to be just Bourbon County. We was having trouble finding app, just applicants, let alone qualified applicants to apply. And I'll, and I'll say it because of pay. So when we broadened that, so we was being able to attract people from Missouri and Lynn County and surrounding counties. I had an employee that left two weeks ago. He was driving from Eldorado Springs.
Work here?
Yes. He said, Bob, I can't, I can't do it. So, and he had experience when he came to me. And so he found employment closer to home, same line of work, making considerable, considerable amount more of money, understandable, and plus gas prices. One of the exit interviews that I did yesterday, that they're leaving next Monday or Tuesday, gentleman lives in Pittsburgh. Gas prices are eating him up.
Yeah.
I have another employee that I did yesterday. He's young. He's moving out a couple, two counties north, gonna chase his dream to be a mechanic. It's understandable. I have another employee that has, that lives in Saint Paul that's driving up here. He has not resigned yet, but he has stated that if gas prices keep rising, he can't afford to work up here. So all in all, the homework that I've done over, since Friday, mainly yesterday, when I've called surrounding counties, I've asked if they could take inmates and I've asked what they pay. Now, um, the counties that I've called are Cherokee, Crawford, Allen, and Lynn, Anderson, and Miami. Everybody but Miami County and Anderson County start out fifteen bucks an hour. They are having problems being fully staffed. When I asked some of these counties if they could take them, take some, because they have an inmate population also, they hesitated. And in an emergency, we will, but we're trying not to because we're short-staffed as well.
Yeah.
So that, it's, it's not just, like you said, it's not unique to Bourbon County. It's unique all over. Miami County, when I called them yesterday, them and Anderson both start out at seventeen an hour. Anderson is full. I don't know how many corrections officers they have and what all they offer. However, Miami County, they start out at between seventeen and nineteen, depending on experience. And they were hesitant to take anybody because their staffing issues are low as well.
Now, you mentioned wages, and we'll ask Susan speaker in just a minute, and possibly because I might be inaccurate here, but it shows we increased your salary forty-eight thousand in twenty-twenty-two.
Who's salaries?
Your departments. Forty-eight thousand. That was quite a bit, I would think, but, but still, it didn't bring people up where they needed to be. Where'd that forty-eight thousand go?
Our, our, we, so we went from, four years ago in twenty-eighteen, we started out at ten seventeen an hour. We got in twenty-eight, that was in seventeen and prior. So in eighteen, I think we got a dollar fifty raise. That brought us up to twelve seventeen. With the three percent that we got in twenty-twenty-three, nothing from eighteen to twenty-two, I'm sorry, from eighteen to twenty-two, nothing. But then when we got the raise in twenty-two at three percent, that brought the starting wage to twelve dollars and fifty cents an hour. I'm gonna say this, and I have a feeling, this is just my opinion, even if we brought it to fifteen dollars an hour, and it was an average, but then you gotta move everybody else up and it's gonna cause a whole big ball of wax for, for the county. Even if we did that to get the starting pay up, it's not a guarantee to bring people to line up at the door to come and do that line of work.
Well, again, I'll mention Public Works having the same problems, but those folks making fairer wage, but they're going to the dumpster park and make three dollars an hour more. So it's across the country, so it's, it's a bad situation.
You made a comment, I apologize for interrupting, but you just made a comment in regard to an increase in salary. How much was that?
Well, the numbers, Susan, it shows forty-eight thousand.
And that was forty-eight thousand for both departments or combined?
No, no, yours was fifty-something. That was just for Southeast Kansas Correctional. Increase from twenty-one to twenty-two budget was a forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and eight dollars increase in salaries for twenty-twenty-two. And yours was a little bit more than that. So, you know, I, I think when we did the budget last year, we certainly tried to help. We tried to address it, so.
And I think when we looked at it, the report that we got from Susan, we're about three percent below at this, or what we should be spending, but we're not quite familiar as to what's gonna happen in the future.
Right.
Because there's still quite a bit of, I don't wanna say there's still quite a bit, I don't know, but it's still early in the year. We're just finished the fifth month, starting the sixth month. Our overtime is kind of already at thirty-two thousand dollars, I believe, from here, from January first to here. And so given the overtime, or given the pay raises and stuff, we feel that that's gonna be over budget in regards to rate, wages, and salaries. And so we are trying to watch that in regards to what's going on. And I'm not, you know, here's an, you know, here's another example, and I'm not taking away or the topic, but no, I won't say anything for now. But anyways, uh, that's where we're kinda sitting right now. And like I said, Bobby and Ben both have were diligently trying to figure out what to do, how to get this going and stuff like that. It was a tough decision to make, and with some of the phone calls and stuff that were made to other sheriffs in regards to it, there are other sheriffs that are in the same situation as us, yes. Have they, were they complimenting or thinking of shutting their jail down because of what we have gone through? Yes, they have. It is tough everywhere. I do agree. It is tough. It's, you know, we see that on the news nightly. We read it in magazines. We read it on internet, whatever. But law enforcement, public safety, when it comes to correctional officers, are just as important. They're the silent ones. They are the unheard, because you don't really see them or hear from them that much. And so with that being said, uh, our hands are tied. I mean, we just, I mean, we can't even, you know, even filling somebody from a deputy's position to go over there and work. Well, that's taking away from their time, their, their days off and stuff. They can't take vacation, so.
I hope you can appreciate where we're sitting, and I understand what you're telling us this morning. I'm gonna quit talking like these other people are. But when we increased your budget for salary to forty-eight thousand, we were hoping that that would bring up enough to make people happy out there, within reason. So apparently it didn't.
Well, and, and here's, and I'm, and I'm not, and I'm pleased, this is not an argument.
It's not.
This is not to start an argument. This is a discussion.
Absolutely.
And we're gonna try to keep this as low-key as we possibly can in discussion and stuff. You know, I don't want to go back, and I understand where you're coming from, but we've, like I said, this is a discussion, and please, this is not to piss anybody off, okay? You can quote me in that. We've had several studies that were done, several, and the outcome says this is where we at, below the minimum, not the average, but the minimum pay, okay? We addressed that, and those were in double-digit figures, okay? But when you give a pay raise that's in a single digit, it's kinda hard to make that up, okay? So we're open for any type of suggestions. We can sit down and have a roundtable discussion at a later time, but right now, we are faced with this situation, dire emergency, that the jail will be closing down with staff that will still operate it so we could still take inmates or arrest these, because by statute, I have to accept the rest.
Or go to other jurisdictions and pick up people that's been arrested on warrants.
Exactly.
What's your long-term plan to fix it? How are you gonna fix it? I mean, what, what needs to happen? Does the country needs to change for people's worth ethics? And I guess we can just keep increasing the money. But Bob, you said yourself, you didn't think fifteen dollars an hour would make any difference today.
I mean, hypothetically speaking, if we change the salary and effective today, I don't think we're gonna have a swath of people come and apply.
Yeah.
I, I, I really don't. I, I don't know what the, the answer is. I would like to think that money would entice people. I, I would like to think that, and I know from prior comments and, and other meetings, and I know that we cannot compete with the private sector. I, I, I understand that, and, and, and I grasp that concept. But we, as a county, all departments, need to figure out some way that we can entice or incentives for our people, whether it be in Roden Bridge, or the Clerk's Office, or the Deeds Office, or whosever Office, to stay. I've always had this philosophy, and I've brought it up to prior commissions. We need to pay our people well enough that they can afford to look. And if they look, then that grass has to be greener on the other side. I'm not saying that we have to pay eighteen bucks an hour or twenty bucks an hour like Timken, but we've got to be able to close that threshold, that if somebody is working for me for seventeen, eighteen bucks an hour, that, okay, I can go make two dollars more, but I'm giving this up, or I'm, I'm, I'm not gonna gain much. But when there's such a wide, a wide salary difference between us and the private sector, it's pretty common sense. I mean, I could, I could go places and make a heck of a lot more money than I'm making here, but this is my home. I wasn't born here, but this is my home. But, so I just wanted to, just so that it's transparent, at sixty inmates, on an average of forty dollars a day, that's twenty-four hundred dollars a day. If you multiply that times thirty days, that's seventy-two thousand a month. And if, if we have to, I hope we don't, I hope that we can come to get this figured out somehow and at least get us back up. You know, I, I don't remember the last time I was full with sixteen people to, to, to run things. And I have my schedules set up so that way, and I have people in position so that way, if somebody calls in sick on that shift, somebody's there to fill it. I don't have to call somebody in on overtime. That's already figured out. If I'm full. When I'm not full, I, I can't. I can operate three, four, and here in the last week or so was five down. But that's using everybody, and everybody's not getting to use those benefits, like spending time with their family, or making ballgames in two-nine-three East Twentieth is their second home. Yes, the overtime and the money's nice, but they're sacrificing a lot to do that. But anyhow, so if we have to do, if this is long-term, which I hope that it's not, we have roughly a hundred and eighty days left in the year. That's four hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars that we're gonna be paying to other counties.
That's an estimate.
Estimate, yeah. Depending on our numbers and that, and that's not including, if I lose anybody else, that's still keeping everybody on because of day-to-day operations. That doesn't include medication. That doesn't include fuel, wear and tear on vehicles and so forth.
How about food service?
We are under contract, so we still, we're gonna, I haven't reached out to them. Worst-case scenario, we have to keep a few of our inmates in because we can't find housing for them, and I'm talking a bare minimum, maybe under ten.
So because we're a government entity, contracts can be broken because of budget constraints?
Sure.
And so we need to get adjustment that where you can possibly do that.
Who's gonna cook for them?
Well, that's what I'm saying. Do you, do you need as much? Can you reduce the amount?
Well, that's something that we'll have to get with the contractors to find out once we get the numbers to negotiate in regards to, because if we do away with that contract, it's gonna be difficult to find another vendor to come back in due to what was going on. And these are vendors that actually take full responsibilities for everything that they do, counties out. So if there is any lawsuits in regards to food allergy reactions and stuff like that that an inmate gets, it's the county or the company that takes that responsibility during the lawsuits, and we're out. So we got to kinda negotiate and watch what we do, and depending on the numbers, then we'll get that taken care of.
But I have, I have two vendors that, the food service is one. The other is our medical, with CHC, and due to pardon, some of our inmates, or most of our inmates going to other facilities that have CHC, I'll have to work something out because, again, if we pull off of that, then our costs go up considerably. CHC has saved Bourbon County a lot of money, and I would hate to get away with that contract. Like I said, I'm hoping this is short-term, very short-term, but I don't have a crystal ball, and I'd hate to make knee-jerk reactions and then turn around and happen to get, trying to get other vendors back in here that may be more.
I have two more questions. Yes, sir. And the second one, I'd like to have Susan take the podium. And I, I don't say this to piss anyone off. Is there any?
Oh, he took my term. He stole my term.
Yeah. No, I, I took a second, so. I give credit to Bill Martin for that term. Some of our larger correctional facilities privately run. Is there any advantage in that? I know the sheriff has ultimate my statute, but they're still privately run. Have you looked at anything like that?
Not, um, so the, the sheriff has control over the jail. The jail has to sit in the county seat. I am almost one hundred percent certain that the, the county has to have the jail, and it can't be because if it was that easy, there's a hundred and five counties in the state of Kansas, everybody would be doing it to get out from under that. There's a hundred and five counties, and out of those hundred and five counties, I think there's a hundred and two jails within Kansas. Three or four are shut down because they're old and they only have one or two beds, kinda like Al Mayberry. So most of those that are privately ran are like a prison, they're not an actual county jail. Those, those facilities house post-trial or sentenced inmates. Then these are considered pre-trial inmates because. Then these are considered pre-trial inmates, because most of them are not sentenced to the county. Very select few over the past eight years have actually been sentenced to the county, and those are usually on misdemeanor DUIs and, and stuff like that, that they can do. When, when they're charged with a felony and convicted, if the judge determines that they go to prison, then they go to prison to serve their time, they don't serve it in-house. If they're convicted of a misdemeanor, then that can be done in-house or in county. So we have very, I don't have any right now that's sentenced. I've had a couple over the past years, and those have just been DUIs.
But if you're going, thinking about private institutions, if you stop and think about it, they're gonna pay a little bit more in wages and stuff to get the employees, so that means your contract and stuff's gonna be a lot more than what we do at the local level. So privatizing or looking for, that would, that would not be feasible for Bourbon County.
For any county, I would say.
Looking, I yield the floor to you.
How many, how many beds do you have?
Seventy-four.
Seventy-four, and there's sixty-two Bourbon County residents?
There are sixteen, I believe this morning when I looked, there were sixty-nine residents. Six of those are Lynn counties, so we'd be right sixty-one, sixty-two inmates. And they are gonna come and remove their inmates and house them elsewhere, um, this week. And I spoke to the sheriff in Lynn County at length the other day. Uh, their facility will not be open for another two to three weeks. And that's if, if everything goes right.
Through the end of, in the end of May, uh, we should've, and our budget should've spent forty-one point five percent till the end of May. And we were, and I believe we were sitting at, or I was sitting at, thirty-eight or thirty-seven percent, which is about three percent less, which gives us some cushion for overtime, for where we're at right now for our pay rate. Gives us some cushion to cover for overtime, uh, because there's gonna be overtime on the sheriff's side now, because we have a deputy that resigned, and so that position's gonna have to be covered too. And there's also a discussion, uh, among the, the troops, let's say, but there's probably one or two more that are leaving too. So, but that's what we're, uh, we're looking with, and, uh, but like I said, this is not about the sheriff's office. I'll handle the sheriff's office as well as, I know the, the jail, or Ben will handle the patrol side of it. That's his responsibilities and duties. But, uh, like I said, Bobby has worked, uh, very hard trying to figure out ways, along with the help of, uh, under Sheriff Cole. They came to me, said, what can we, you know, this is that, where I'd end with, ends with. And I believe in, these guys have done everything they possibly can, so.
Sure, I'm sorry, go ahead, no, I'm done, go ahead.
No, no, it's fine. Um, so you have, I was a little confused. You have eight employees, or you have eleven total?
I have, on my budget, what I budgeted for.
I'm not talking about budget, I'm talking about today.
Today?
Today.
Today I have eleven. Next Tuesday, I'll be down to eight.
Total, that counts you?
No, that does not count me.
Don't count everybody under you.
That is, I have nineteen positions.
Okay.
I have sixteen that are assigned to the back, that are six CEOs, four corporals, four sergeants, and two lieutenants. That does not include myself, or my captain, or my business secretary. So out of that, then comes the sixteen in the back. Um, and then, I'll be down to eight, eight of those. I'll still have eleven, if you count me and us three, but I'll have those positions.
And since you're talking about personnel, and I know there's gonna be people in the public that are going to make comments, well, they increased their staff when they went out there, when they built the new jail, they increased their staff. No, that's incorrect. The same amount of staff that was here in this courthouse, in the sheriff's office, and the jail was here, is the same amount of staff that went on there, except for one, and that was for the transportation officer that was used to come back and forth. But for staffing purposes, it's the same amount of personnel that was employed here, that's still employed down there, except for one, which was the transportation officer.
And, and just to clarify that, we hired that one, I believe in twenty-fifteen or to twenty-sixteen, to go ahead and assume it into the budget, so that we would, you know, see where things are at. So, we did hire one, that was supposed to be for the transportation officer back and forth, but one officer doesn't, doesn't do it when you've got two or three courtrooms running. So, we make do with what we got, um, I'm not asking for no more people, I can't even fill the positions I got. But, um, this is, um, very hard.
Yes, my question, Bobby, was you have, we're gonna fast forward to next week, you have eight openings next week.
Yep.
Do you equate so many employees per inmate, or how do you numbers?
No, um, because if we did, if we did that, we would have to require a lot more staff.
I don't know.
Um, right now, I mean, if you have three on a shift, and there's seventy-four, that's one per twenty-some, you know? But that's, that's not accurate, because one of those people are sitting in the control room that can't go anywhere. So, then you just have two on the floor, but when I'm fully staffed, there may be shifts that have three, minimum, four, or maybe four to five, depending on how we, we set their, their schedule. Um, but like I said, it's been two years since, I have to look the last time, I can't remember when I was, but yes.
But to answer your question, there was a study that was done on that, and I think, sorry. Need to paint it orange so it can be seen.
Okay.
I think when the study was done, I think it was one correctional officers per eight, or ten inmates, is what the standard is. But I'll have to go back and look that up when that study was done, prior to the jail being built. Because that was part of the question, was the staffing, and they came up with that number, and we've realized and talked, saying, oh, we, the way the jail is designed, we can handle with the current staff members that we have.
Well, and I ask that because if you had eight employees, my next question was, can you handle twenty-five inmates? I mean, why does it have to be almost empty if you still have eight staff? I mean, can that ratio, can it be thirty percent full with eight employees, or?
Well, so, until, until somebody actually does the job, they don't quite understand it.
Well, I understand that.
But.
And you're open twenty-four hours a day?
Twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three sixty-five, holidays, snow days, rain days, everything. Most of my employees are in the age between eighteen to their early twenties. I do not have the, um, employee that's, you know, thirty-five, forty, fifty years old. You know, I've got one, but, and I don't wanna say he doesn't count, but he does. But most of my workforce is in that, that age category. When I have, if I have two people on, I don't like it, I've never ran with less than three, because of safety concerns, because you never know what's gonna happen, even if you have twenty-five inmates, and it could be your best inmates. But you, you personally walk into that pod, and something goes wrong, you have nobody else in that building to come to your aid. Because one person is sitting on control to let everybody in and out, so that person is pretty much, they're essential, but they, if, 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 if somebody's handing you a fist sandwich, they can't come help. You're on your own. At least with three, you may, you have somebody else on the floor there that can rush to your aid and help you in a medical situation, or help you with an inmate situation. Um, a lot of people today don't like confrontation, don't know how to deal with confrontation. De-escalation techniques are few and far between. Um, so, having somebody or telling somebody, hey, it's just you two today, knowing what they could possibly get in, whether it's twenty-five inmates, ten inmates, or whatever, that's a bad deal.
Let's see, and that was just a question?
No, no, yeah, sure, it's, it takes a unique, a unique person to do what we do, whether it's on my side, or it's on his side.
Kind of in a nutshell, is, would you as an individual, you don't have to answer that, you don't, you don't have to answer that question. But the question is, as an individual, would you go into a room of sixteen inmates, where three of them are fighting? Would you go in there on your own? So, you know, you kind of, you gotta stop and think about that for a second, unless you have a second or a third person coming in right behind you to help you out. So, you know, I don't want you to ask, answer that question, but to think about that question.
Sure, it's, it's a dangerous job, there's no doubt about that. I have a question, Susan, if you take the podium, and I'll, like, blend off here a little bit. The money, the dollars he's talking about spinning out, where's that coming, gonna come from? We don't have it.
First glance, um, I can't tell you, um, other than you may have to dip into some sales tax money, um, of which you don't have a whole lot built up there yet. Um, and if sales tax takes a dip, then, you know, it's a little bit different too. Um, I kinda wanna talk about this, it's a much bigger conversation than, and, than what they're, uh, looking at today. Um, when we start talking about raises for all departments and things like that. Um, this was in your budget document last year, and it's a comparison to other counties of like size. And from that, um, we really focused in on people that have, or counties that have populations similar to ours. Of course, you have to look at the assessed valuation, you have to look at, um, how much property tax is generated based off of that. But what really comes from that is, um, Bourbon County, when we did the comparison, they were right in the middle on our population. But we have the lowest assessed valuation in the comparisons, and we're the third highest in mill levies. So we're, we're poor, and we're taxing at a high rate. And, um, and we're the second to lowest in what we can generate in property taxes. So, it's a much bigger conversation, it's, it's more about economic development and growth, um, in our community. And so, um, I don't know how, that is, that is a partnership between lots of entities. Bourbon County Ready, City of Fort Scott, our school districts, everybody coming together and figuring out how we get our assessed valuations up so that we can lower our taxes. Um, that's housing development, that's, um, industry coming in. Um, because right now, we're just a poor, we're a poor county. We really are, when it comes to what we have to fund in the services that we provide. Um, another thing is, is that I, I looked at the American City County Government, uh, Journal, and we talked, you talked about it being a national problem, it really is. Um, what's, what's changed, um, according to their article, is that the private sector is higher, is offering high compensation, flexibility, and rapid career advancement. And younger workers, that's what they're looking for. Um, they're calling this the Great Resignation, um, we've never seen anything like this in, um, I don't know, in history. Turnover is unprecedented. Um, they said, "For many, the pandemic prompted reflection about what is most important in their lives. Work, it turns out, wasn't the, as important as many had thought, and people became less willing to center their lives around their job." Um, one of the other things that they talk about in this article is that there's definitely a shift in worker attitudes. Um, they, there's five values that could be driving the change, um, a desire for flexibility across all dimensions, work that works for the person. Um, among the, the, uh, young, uh, groups, they're telling, uh, governments to rethink how they're giving incentives, both wage and non-wage incentives to align better with new worker values. So we're not talking about just other industries, we're talking about the people that we're trying to hire. They're saying be open to hiring senior workers. Um, the report that they did said that if we don't change our approach to hiring and retention, the oldest members of the Gen X, those born between nineteen ninety-seven and two thousand twelve, who are now twenty-five, and the youngest just ten years old, the cohort will be the target hires for the next decade or more, and their interests are very, very different than those of the baby members in the Gen Xers, who now occupy most senior roles in government. So, we have to rethink what we're doing, and that's, that's a much bigger conversation.
What's the next step? The sales tax money didn't handle it, what will we do, no fund warrants, or?
Um, that, that, that could be a potential. Um, you may have to do some serious budget cuts, you may have to do some reduction in force. I mean, there's just lots of things, conversations that can happen around that. This is a very serious conversation.
Very serious.
So, um.
The implications of this all.
Yeah.
Lynn?
I've, uh, run through all those numbers, from, and watched a very close sale on the economic side. And, uh, I'm with you, you're right, it's nationwide, and the worker attitude is not there anymore. You know, I, uh, I, uh, used to have a construction company, you know, when I retired from the funk company, and now the same people that are already constructed, they can't get workers. They're, they're having a very difficult time. So it's, it's a conversation that's gonna have to continue, to find out what it is. It's not all about money, and, and you talked about anybody in this county, and ask if they want their property tax to go up, you're asking the wrong question.
All, uh, we'll close, um, I wanna kinda reiterate on what Susan spoke about. That's kinda what I had said prior, she's a hundred percent spot on. But I'll make a comment, and we've always made this comment, and it, it, to me, it comes, um, full, full circle, if you will. Costs a lot of money to fight crime, and crime don't care about money. So, it, it's, 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 it's bad, it's a service that, you know, we have to provide, every county has to provide. But the, the people that are allegedly committing crimes don't care if we've got an industrial park full of businesses, or we have zero. It does, it doesn't matter.
I think her point is, we have to figure out, we have to, that's what pays our taxes, Bobby.
Yes, correct, 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 I know, and I, and I understand that.
Like I told, said, a week or so ago, we don't have a golden goose that just keeps laying eggs to pay for everything.
Right.
Um, one thing that I think you, you should say, and I'm gonna say it for you, um, you, and, and maybe I'm wrong, but I know Sheriff Martin's people are on three twelves. Are your people, do they work twelves, or they work eights?
They work twelves.
They work twelves. So I think it's important for the public to understand that that's a very, very difficult thing to staff. It's, there's, and me and Ben have talked about this a year ago, and I think you were there. I mean, hospital systems have spent billions of dollars trying to figure out how to do it effectively, and they haven't figured it out either. So I think it's important, um, I'm just trying to help you out with the public and say, look, this is, it's not as easy as, this is a twenty-four-hour operation. Sheriff Mark, uh, Sheriff Martin's operation is a twenty-four-hour operation. So it's a little different than working at McDonald's, or working somewhere else, staffing, in my opinion. Now, some people want that three twelves, you know, because you could potentially get four days off if you're fully staffed. But I can tell you right now, in the healthcare industry, there's plenty of places that are going through the exact same thing, so.
Right, and, and some of the employees that I've talked to, you know, um, some on their exit interview was working the twelve-hour shifts, and after I sat and questioned and answered them, it wasn't so much the twelve-hour shifts, it was working two, supposed to get two days off, and having to come in and cover one or both of those days. And I said, I could go to eights, I said, but you won't like them, because you're gonna have a Tuesday and a Wednesday off. You're never gonna have the opportunity to, to have a weekend off, and with working twelve-hour shifts, we, you know, when we're fully staffed, or whatever, you have the potential to have three days off every other weekend. And on your short week, you can take twenty-four hours of vacation and have a seven days off. So it's very beneficial, and, and, and you are correct, it's not like we can, and, and I don't mean to pick on any other elected official, or any other office or road and bridge, but, you know, at the, if, if somebody calls in sick on a road grader, we, we just don't grade the roads. We don't call somebody else in on overtime to do that, and, and at the end of the day, we get to flip the light off at five, and we'll worry about what happens tomorrow. But with the twenty-four, seven, three- But with the twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five operation, it, it, it's got to be oiled and it's got to run.
And I think, yeah, and I think that's where you asked if you could just do twenty inmates with eight, it just doesn't work that way.
Yeah.
Because of, because of that type of work.
We have a big problem in the evening.
You would, you would, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, they're working twenty-four hour day.
You could probably do it, you could probably staff with eight people. You would burn them out in a month, they'd all quit. You're gonna, I know, I'm just, no, 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 twelve, twelve hour shifts with eight people, but they would just be working.
Every day.
And you, and they would quit within a month, or two weeks, or a week.
And then it would worsen our situation.
So, so I think, just, just trying to, show I understand, I guess.
And I appreciate that.
Thank you.
One last question.
Don't know the answer.
Since we built the new facility, what percentage of crime went up in Bourbon County? And, and I know, Bill, you know numbers, so.
Well, that was one of the, uh, I was going to get those numbers, calls for service. But since the, uh, since Dispatch has a new supervisor now, I'm letting them get their feet wet before I start generating reports. Cause all the reports will go through Dispatch, so there is no questions in regards. So, give me a couple of weeks to get those figures for calls for service, uh, call waiting. And we'll probably even get you numbers, we'll have to go through a district court, of how many arrests, warrant arrests have been issued, picked up, or whatever, so it's kind of a busy thing. So, um, before closing out, I do ask that, uh, if there's any public comments, because I know public comments are at the end of the agenda. But if there's any public comments, because we're going to be leaving after this, but if there's any public comments upon your permission or request, or being allowed, for somebody to come up and speak at the podium while we're still here, we'll be more happy to answer whatever questions there might be.
Yeah, we can do that. We can do the public comment up.
I mean, I'm just, I'm just saying, if there's any public comments.
On this subject.
If it's a subject, you can ask for comments.
Yeah.
You can ask for comments on this.
Any public comments regarding this?
On this only.
On this only.
Come on up, Clint.
You need help? Nope, I'm good, I'm good. I just had, you got, it takes a minute to get up.
Uh, the comment I have, and I read newspapers from Lynn County, Allen County, and I, you know, they have a, in there where the commissioners meet. And I don't see this in our county, and I'm not sure in Allen County on what they do. But I do know in Lynn County, uh, what happens is they have a sheriff's report every commission meeting that tells you how many inmates they have at that sheriff's report. Uh, they tell how much funding and all of those things, too, and how many inmates are farmed out, uh, how many arrests, and this and that and the other. It's a very short report, but it, it's given every, uh, commission meeting in Lynn County. And I just wonder why we don't do that here. So, the public has more of a knowledge of what is going on, how many, and all that. Thank you.
We send a report out every day to the paper, Tribune. Uh, there's about thirty people on there to get that. Uh, I believe maybe some people in the room get it, if not, you could be added to it as public knowledge. Uh, but we send out every, those out every, um, twenty-four hours. So, like, if we came in this morning and there's a report that we run, and we attach it to the email, we send it out to everybody, uh, mainly it's the courts and all that, but it's public knowledge. So, we do send that out on who's arrested, um, how many inmates we have each day, and also, um, inmates released within the last twenty-four hours. We also have an awesome website that, um, people can go to and check that out at any time that they want, see who's in jail, see who got released.
Sign up for alerts where it'll text you every morning to let you know who was arrested the night before they were released.
But as far as, uh, the sheriff reports, um, I can't speak to the, for the sheriff.
Did anyone of course cut biz also?
Yes.
I thought it was.
Yes, and I, and if you're, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think each one of the commissioners on the list, too.
I don't know if they are or not.
They were.
I don't get it.
But we will put you on the email list.
If you want to be on, like I said, it just lets you know, the courts get it, parole gets it, probation gets it, um, radio station, the Tribune gets it, Nevada Tribune gets it. But it, it's poet, so if you want on there, I just need to know the email.
You may, you get the Tribune, don't you, Clint?
Yeah, well, I buy one.
Yeah.
And Friday, Saturday.
Yeah, and it's all in there, they're all in the newspaper.
Have one more question, it's really a sincere question, I'm not being smug or anything. When the jail was built, it was highly discussed on how much money we was going to make out renting beds. Did that change because the crime rate went up?
I'm not going to go down that rabbit hole, because that is another conversation for another day. However, basically to answer your question, so we moved into that jail six eighteen of eighteen. Four years ago, this month, we moved into it. When the jail was built, the jail was built, we had forty inmates here, and twenty to twenty-five housed out at that time. So, we built that jail for seventy-four. At the time, we had sixty-five. So, yes, we was hoping to, we have eleven hundred square feet currently at the jail that pods could have been put in, but they were not at that time. But yes, if, 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 and hindsight's twenty-twenty.
Sure.
And I'm not, not arguing, not pointing fingers. If we could go back in time, I would probably bet that at that time, the cells or something would have been added into that space to house them, because that could have been paid off in two and a half years, and then we would have had two and a half years of revenue. And that two and a half years of revenue could have assisted in our budget as far as wages for employees and so forth.
Any general operations of that?
But we can't go back in time, so we're dealt with the hand that we got now, and unfortunately, it's a two and a jack, and we can't do nothing with it.
Okay.
So, that's where we're at.
Ben, it's Justin, make sense. I just want to know if he had any comments, but.
Do there any other public comments?
Ben?
Well, I, yeah, other than, I have, I have no answers. And we've already talked about how it's a nationwide problem, and it's not just a sheriff department problem. It's a society problem, and the way our society is going. So, it's going to take faith-based communities, medical communities, sheriff communities, school communities, to effectively change the culture of our county. The only other idea that popped into my head, because you're gonna, everybody's gonna have to think outside the box, was implementing some type of, um, of, I, I, and the only term I have is, is ROTC type problem. And I know for sheriff and, and law enforcement, that wouldn't be called that. But what, is there anything that could be, um, law enforcement type classes in our high school and in our junior college to possibly help the education process in order that they would come out, you know, ready to be hired?
The junior college has classes.
The junior, the college has some other classes out there. As a matter of fact, I was an adjunct instructor out there for several years teaching basic law enforcement to get people entered, introduced to, uh, law enforcement.
But at, do they then, okay, so they finish that, then what happens? So, are they ready to be hired?
They usually go back to their home.
They go back to their home, so this...
How the system works in the state of Kansas is that an agency has to hire that individual, this is for the state of Kansas. The agency has to hire that individual. Then that individual then is sent to the state academy up in Kansas.
Okay.
While he's out there, he's being paid a, a salary, just like any other deputy is paying salary. Uh, before he goes out there, before he or she goes out there, they're usually with an FTO, get training, so they're kind of, kind of ahead of the game before they actually hit the academy campus. They go through the, uh, fourteen weeks of training, they want to move it up to sixteen, but that's still in discussion right now with the, uh, KU and, and Kansas Law Enforcement Training Center. Once they finish that, they graduate, and they're certified in the state of Kansas, they come back, and then they go with an FTO again to make sure that, kind of polish up some things. Usually what happens then is that by statute, once they finish the academy, they have to work for that agency for one year.
Okay.
And then after that one year, at three hundred and sixty-seventh day, guess what they're doing?
They go somewhere else.
Guess what they're doing while they're out there at the academy? They're networking. They're with other agencies, with other police officers, going through the same thing that they're doing. And what do they do? They network, and they start talking. And they build up friendships and bonds, and they say, "Oh, so how much are you getting paid?" "Well, I'm getting this." "How much you get paid?" "Well, I'm getting this." "Well, how in the world am I getting, why am I getting paid this while you're getting paid this? This doesn't make any sense."
I understand, yeah.
So, that's what happens. And then they, then they...
So, there's nothing that, I mean, I know it's with, not in your realm of, uh, authority, to change that time period from a year to three years. It'll never happen.
It's been a year since I got in in ninety-five.
That's a legislative action.
Well, maybe it's, yes, I, I understand that that probably is a legislative action. But we cannot be the only county going through this.
Yeah, you cannot tell somebody that they have to stay at a job for three years either and not go somewhere else.
Well, um, you know, I, doctors who want to serve in rural communities are, you know, do it all the time. Yeah, I, I know, just trying to think outside the box. Okay.
Any other public comment? Well, I just, I just want to know if you have any comments on this subject, Justin?
Not this time.
Okay, very good, thank you. I keep saying one last question. If you're starting a salary of fifteen dollars an hour, what do you think would happen?
I don't know, I don't, if, if I knew the answer to that, I wouldn't be doing what I'm doing right now. I can only hope that it would help. I don't know if it's a, a fix-all. Because other counties that are paying that wage are, um, having the same difficulties keeping them. And actually, the county to the south of us, they're right below fifteen. But I spoke to the sheriff yesterday, and as of the twenty-second, in the middle of the year, he's, the, their commissioner, whatever they do down there, they're moving it to fifteen. So, other counties are having the same problem, uh, even at fifteen. So, and honestly, and I'm, I'm pro-employee all the way around, whether it's my employees, his employees, her employees, the, all the way around. I think that that is a bigger issue that's probably going to have to be tackled between department heads and elected officials in Miss Bancroft, because I feel that it's going to be a, um, a snowball effect on other county employees, that if we do this, then this is going to have to raise, and this, and this, and this, and this, just in my department, and then that's going to cause other issues for other elected officials or other places, and it's, it's going to be a bad deal.
Okay.
So, like I said, I think it's a start in the right direction, but it's going to be a bigger snowball effect, and then it's not guaranteed. So, I am available for any questions, roundtable events, other meetings that we need to have to try to figure out a solution to this ginormous problem.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Take a short break.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Come on, you're almost done, you can finish it.
Can I get up or not? No. So... Yeah, yeah, I know, yes. Yeah.
Yeah, I think that was right.
That was a regular, I'm out.
I think it's right. Right, I'm just saying. Yeah, yeah. That's what you think. Take number four. Yeah, yeah. Just for your info, Emily, out of Eldorado, uh, she's in Chinsure, she goes by there. They, and you're, you're talking hardcore, so, and I guess they start, and they can't get up, and they can't get up. I'm joking. Look at him. Now, come, there's our...
Let me tell you, when I think of over the years, you look at all the unfunded inmates, the state push over the counties, they can care less.
That's what I'm saying.
You know, just like that, just like the school thing, they didn't care. Now, it's a nine-ish, there'll probably be some more. So, we may reach that match, I'm telling you. It's just a gross thing. I don't think Randy, I don't think Randy finished his job.
Who did? Who was it?
Randy. He's a member of us, Remo, I think.
Who was it?
Randy.
Randy.
I don't remember this last name. Did a lot of workforce, and then all of a sudden...
Disappeared.
Disappeared. What's that?
I asked Bill where that guy was in the suit.
Who was it?
It's his lawyer.
It's Bill. Are you kidding me?
No. I didn't hear you.
I asked Bill who the guy was.
Or who?
Bill.
So, he, so he lied to Justin, and he said he wasn't represented.
Okay, well, we might, we might need to go down that route.
Oh, well, what a deal.
There was some, there was something to say, well, yeah.
I thought you handed me the string.
What's that?
I thought you handed the whole thing extremely well.
It did, really?
I'm proud of you, Lynn.
Oh, I could have. What are you up to?
You doing okay?
I'm good, how about yourself?
Complaints, complaints, yes.
Yes.
They're firing, needing to come to you, that's...
That's a understatement.
Morning, Justin.
Yeah, I got an executive session next.
Yeah, so... Yeah, so. That's all, that's all.
Yeah, it's, is what it is.
Is what it is. Well, we know now.
Yeah.
I wasn't planning on going into executive session today, but I just got some information that we need to go into executive session for attorney-client privilege.
Like right now or?
Yeah, right now. It's that big of a deal, yeah. I hate to jump ahead. I need, we need to modify the agenda.
I'll make a motion to.
Well, I guess we can go, I mean, with Lynn, we're doing.
We're doing, we're consultation with our attorney.
So I need to add an extra five minutes onto that executive session for another issue.
I don't have to do that.
Well, yeah, it's the same. I didn't realize it, Lynn.
Okay.
We're ready.
Make a motion to someone, on the executive session. But you're so good.
Got me reading.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thousand mile in there. Make a motion to go to executive session, KSA seventy-four, forty-three, nineteen, B two, for consultation with attorney for the public body or agency which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship for the three commissioners, County Councilor Meeks.
Uh, Susan Bancroft.
Susan Bancroft. And the three commissioners.
Well, Susan's going in, I need, I'll have to come back out and go into another one. Cause I, I need one without Susan.
Okay, this will be for?
It's gonna be for legal.
How long?
Oh, let's do ten minutes.
For ten minutes, we return here at ten forty-one.
And Susan's coming in because she has expert opinion or information that we need to consult.
Do you need to do your first?
Yeah, we, I can't. She can't be on the one. All right.
We're doing this one with Susan.
Right.
Make a motion to resume normal session, no action.
Take it.
All in favor?
Aye.
I got one more executive session there Susan. Make a motion to go an executive session, KSA 7543 19B4 to discuss data relating to financial affairs or trade secrets of corporations partnerships trust individual partnerships be three commissioners county councilor Meeks Rob Harrington and Merrill Atwater Rob Harrington is our economic developer has special expertise in this Merrill Atwater has special expertise also it'll be for 10 minutes we return here at 10:53.
All in favor? Aye.
10 CSIM 11:03.
Sorry.
Second.
I haven't yet.
Larry wrote down.
Make a motion to resume normal session at 11:03.
Second.
He wanted to act. Any discussion, all that? No. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No action, guys?
No action. No, there was no action, unfortunately.
Okay.
Ms. Susan Bancroft.
Hi. One of our longest meetings in a long time. The S E K multi-county health department is doing a community baby shower and our handbook does not allow for solicitation. And so I wanted to ask permission to be able to put this out in our departments. And it really just kind of talks about where you can take different things for this baby shower. Says is looking for donations of diaper bags to give away. We've purchased many of them already. We like as many as we can get. So we could make a donation as a county or just set this out for, so our county employees can see it. But our, we do have a thing in our handbook that says no solicitation. So they had just asked that we put this out. So I need permission to either put it out or not.
I don't know why not.
I don't either.
Okay. Perfect. Wonderful. I will put that out. Thank you. Bank reconciliation for May is complete. One's for Ashley. There's really nothing new. Sales tax is up still. So that's, that's pretty much all I have to report on. But we did, we did reconcile. So I think every, all departments are doing much better about getting that done quickly.
Susan, I did have a question. I looked at this. You sent it out last night or whatever. Why is the CDs some different at our investment center? I mean, how come that's not more even? I'm just curious. I just.
They were CDs from a long time ago.
I see. Okay.
And they've just left them there. We probably ought to, I don't know when they retire or mature. I would have to get with Patty.
I'm just curious.
Well, with the interest rates going up, it might be good for us to bid those out again. So I'll get with Rhonda and Patty on that.
Okay.
And see what we need to do. I don't know what the interest rates are right now at the bank anyway, so.
Not much.
Yeah.
Trust me, not much.
Yeah. Let's see, what's my next topic? Oh, juvenile detention. We did get our letter from them as far as what they will be charging for next year for a budgeted item. In the past, we've always budgeted $110,000. And so that's still within the range. I just wanted to show you what their estimate was. Their estimate's $83,655. And it's based on usage. So. And then I need an executive session for five minutes to discuss personnel matters and it will just be the three commissioners, myself and Shane.
Make a motion to go an executive session, KSA 75-43-19B1 to discuss personal matters of individual, non-elective personnel to protect their privacy for five minutes. We'll return here at 11. Three commissioners, Susan Bancroft, Shane Walker.
Job performance.
What's that?
Job performance.
Five minutes, so 11:13.
I don't know if Justin's still here.
We might go 11. We're going to return at 11:14 by the time we get in there.
11:14. Yeah.
Does it add Justin Meeks to that, that also?
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.